Let's see, a renewal at 25B, I don't know, we have a variance at 25B North Street, a renewal at 132 Silver Mine, and then a appeal of action in regards to 19 Beach Street. So with any of that, I would like to get started and call the meeting in order at 7:01. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Due to flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
And one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Okay, so it's gonna work, it's the same way that it always works, okay? We're gonna hear from the applicants first in all cases, we're gonna hear from the attorneys, we're gonna hear from developers, engineers, and then the public will be able to speak after we have both information and testimony and all of our questions have been asked and answered. With any comments like from the public, we ask that you direct all comments and all questions through the chair and not towards the applicant or the applicant's parties, including the lawyers representing the applicant or any of the engineers or developers, okay? So with that said, the first case that we're gonna hear tonight on the docket is 25B North Street for the public hearing. So officially open the public hearing now at 7:02.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Could you do me a favor and our agenda, seating of alternates at that point, can you, can we just say who regular members are seated? Do we have a quorum, who they are, and are there alternates present that are needed to be seated?
Yeah, that's fine. We could do that during the time where we're supposed to have alternates, but unfortunately on our public hearing agenda, it does say seating of alternates, but there is no seating of alternates during a public hearing. I don't know why that's on there, that should not be on there, so we will definitely fix that. That comes into play during our regular meeting with the alternates. So when we get to that plateau, yes, we will definitely go down the line and introduce everybody as needed. So yes, 7:02, the public hearing on 25B North Street is now open. So will somebody representing 25B North Street please explain exactly what you guys are looking to do and give us your testimony? And please state your name and your name for the record and unmute yourselves.
Hi, my name is Hillard, I'm by the way, Hilly. I'm the owner of the property at 25B North Street in Seymour. This property is, was, I purchased the property in 1988 from George Beshear Sr. He originally purchased the property in 1968, and in 1978 or so, he cut off a parcel that fronts on North Street, it's a one acre plus, approximately one acre parcel that he transferred to his son who built a house there. So that's 58 Jupiter Road is a bucks my property. And in 1988, and when he's cut off that lot for his son, because he owns acreage behind that lot, he reserved for himself off of North Street, a 20-foot right-of-way to get into his remaining 16 and a half or so acres of land, which I purchased in 1988. The only access to that property is through the 20-foot right-of-way off of Jupiter Drive. Since purchasing the property in 1988, I was actually was hoping that I would be able to work out another access, another wire way to get into the property, but I was, I basically was unable to do that, and I spent quite a bit of time exploring my alternatives for access and for possible joint development with property owners, but nothing, it never came to fruition. So, you know, here I am, I would like to be able to utilize the property and my, my request is for, I know that a right-of-way is not normally permissible, as I've been, is explained to me, as a right-of-way, as a viable access way to an interior lot. So, but that's the only way that I have into my property. Without that right-of-way, without that access, I can't put my property to any use at all. So what I was requesting was a variance to utilize the right-of-way, basically just to utilize the interior acre, acreage as a single-family building lot, it's in a single-family zone. So it's just a request for a right-of-way to get into my prop, to get into my property for access for purposes of developing a single lot.
Okay, um, I see that your plot plan was prepared by Horrible and Judson. Do you have anybody here tonight from them that wishes to talk about what you're intending to do?
I don't, but I mean, I think I can, I think I can explain it. I think it's, well, I think in my request for the variance, I think it was pretty much laid out what I was trying to do. Let's just see, and I have a little site plan that was attached, you have a copy of that map that shows the location of the 20-foot right-of-way on the property. And, you know, this, this, it's, it's a steep, it's a steeper slope to get into the property. So this was the, this is the best, essentially it's the only way I have in it anyways. I mean, do you have any questions? Because I can certainly answer any questions.
So we're gonna go down the line, you know, for our line of questioning like we usually do. So we'll start with Bob. Bob, do you have any questions? Bob Nerone?
Oh, I apologize, I had to unmute it.
There you go.
Well, not at the moment. I'm looking over the map, just trying to get the best, you know, idea of, I think, I think I have a pretty good idea without have actually been there, but I don't have any questions at the moment.
Okay, Phil, you're up.
Um, what are we, what's, what's the application for? A variance for what? If the, if you could explain?
Sure, the requirement, the variance is to permit me to utilize a right-of-way as a, as a driveway or as an access to a, to an interior lot. The zoning regulations, as I understand it, require that you actually have a deeded, this is my wife's computer, I don't know if she, if she lost me. Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Robin! Yeah, so, the, so normally we would need to have a deed, we don't have to own the fee to the property, I only have a right-of-way into my property. I know that there, I know that there's a requirement also that a, I believe for an interior lot, normally we're looking for a 25-foot right-of-way. I can tell you that when this was originally granted, I don't know what that requirement, if there was such of a requirement, but I have and I, I can provide, I did contact, after learning that the requirements normally for a 25-foot right-of-way, I contacted George and Lynn Beshear, and they actually have agreed to, and actually granted me an extension of the width of my right-of-way from 20 feet to 30 feet, and that's been recorded, although I can't give you the information on it, but that was just recorded, I just got a confirmation of that today. So I have the necessary width. My understanding is that on a, for a lot that fronts a road, the slope you can have up to a 17% grade for a driveway, normally an interior lot requires that your, the grade of the driveway be no more than 10%. In my case, it would be closer to that 17%, and that's why I also requested a variance for purposes of the grade to get down to the property. And that's pretty much it. I mean, there's also a little bit in the beginning of the driveway, which I would be sharing that in common with George and Lynn Beshear. I'm not sure if that is something which requires permission as well, because the right-of-way, although it's, it's, I guess, the first, let's say, 30 or so feet of it, it's gonna be shared, shared driveway.
So, 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 I'm a little naive, but I just, I don't understand what we're granting. You have a deeded right-of-way to get to the interior lot, and that's already deeded, right?
Correct.
Okay, so the variance you asked, go ahead.
There was, it was a reserved right-of-way, so you can continue, I'm sorry I interrupted.
Sorry, no, no, I don't like these Zoom meetings at all, I'm sorry. Okay, so the variance you're looking for is for the, the grade and, and, because it's already deeded for the right-of-way, what, what's, what variance are we granting you? I don't, I don't understand.
Well, the, the, one, one variance is to be able to utilize a right-of-way as opposed to owning the strip of land and fee. See, I only have a, it was just a reserved right-of-way, so that strip is not owned by the 18 acres, that strip is owned by George and Lynn Beshear. So that's one, one variance. One variance is, as you said, for the grade. I believe that I solved the width issue, but, and I don't know if I require any type of variance or permission to have common driveway in the beginning of the driveway, because it's gonna be a shared driveway for at least the initial 30, 30 or so feet. So I, I'm, so I'm saying, so two, if not three variances are what I'm requesting. And it's all for permission, all for just to have the permission to be able to utilize a right-of-way for access to my property. So I have no other, no other legal frontage on a public road.
I, I, I understand, I understand that, but I don't know what I'm granting. I just don't understand. You have a deeded right-of-way to get into the interior lot, but you can't make it a driveway because of, of one, two, three, four different, or five different conditions, and you want variances for these five conditions so that you could have the driveway? And, and under regulations like emergency access and all that kind of stuff that we have to consider? So I just don't understand, you know, who's saying that it's approaching 17% on, on the, on the, on the, on the grade? I, I just don't understand the, the application. I'm sorry.
The, the grade, the, the grade, that number, the 17% was Jesse Judson's number. So he looked at this, he prepared this site plan for me, and he said that you wanna request the maximum, the maximum permissible grade that we have right now on, for a lot, for a building lot. Right now, I'm asking for the, the type of grade that would be considered a maximum grade permitted for a frontage lot, but for an interior lot, it's normally limited to 10%.
I, 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 hold on one second, I understand that. The 17% is allowed for road front lots. This is not a road front lot. So interiors are 10 to 17%. So is this more than 17%? And then you're asking for a variance?
No, I was, I thought it was, I was, I was under the impression that it was 10%, not 10 to 15%. If it's 10 to 15%, then I'm gonna say that based upon what I, what I've been told, I have not been told that I need a grade in excess of 17%. So I'm assuming, I'm, I'm, you know, if, if I need it, I would have to come back for it, but I'm not. So I guess I'm, if you're telling me that I could go up to 17% on the grade, then that's not a requirement for a variance. I don't need that. I asked for something I don't need as to the grade.
Hello? Who, who did, who, so who did the site plan?
Jesse Judson.
Mr. Willamy, can, can I just help out a little bit?
I would love for you to do that, Brian.
Mr. Demko, I'm sorry, through the chair.
Yes, thank you.
Did I chime in?
Yes, Brian, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just here to, to help if, if there are any questions, and it looks like there's some confusion. I do believe that rear lots cannot have driveways over 10% and front lots can have driveways up to 17%. So one of the variances here that's being applied for is to construct a driveway that is at 17% instead of the 10% that's required. The rest of them, as far as I can see, is essentially cleaning up what has already been produced, and that is a, a landlocked piece that isn't allowed by the zoning regulations today. And it looks like these other four variances are relating to that. I don't necessarily know whether or not they're necessary or completely legal, but I think it is a way to just clean this whole thing up.
That, that, that was what our, my intention was in asking for everything.
Okay. All right, Phil, you can continue.
Okay, so with that said, the only thing that we have to go and judge on the grade is this, is it, is the, is the drawing that we have? I wish Mr. Judson was here.
Yeah, this seems to be the only thing we have is this plot plan regards to what we're looking at. And I mean, looking at the plot plan, it seems like this is a pretty intricate proposal, because you're cutting through, you got a few different things going on here. Okay, all right, Phil, go ahead, continue.
So my, my, my suggestion or question is, these one, two, three, four, five different, I think, variances are, should be cleaned up and should be specific and just put in the application, we put in this application for the specific thing so that, I mean, it would be, it would be extremely difficult to form a motion the way this request is, is presented. That's, that's all I have, that's all, that's where I am right now.
Okay, anything else, Phil?
No.
Okay, all right. So my question is, what is your exact hardship in this case?
Well, the hardship, the hardship is that I have no way to utilize my property unless the variance is granted. I mean, the zoning regulations, as I understand them, do not permit the use of a right-of-way to access my property, and there's no other way to utilize that lot. So the hardship is, the hardship is that there's, you know, that there's, there's no other, no other way to, there's, the property cannot be otherwise used.
Okay.
That's the hardship.
Are you planning on using this property as your primary residence?
No.
No, okay. And is this already an approved building lot?
No, it couldn't, it couldn't, I don't know how, if it could be without a, without getting a, without having an access.
Okay.
I mean, I understand, I understand, I understand that, you know, whatever requirements are necessary to establish that the lot can be built, that you can build a house, that those, all, all those things have to be done, all of those things have to be done. And I understand that I'm gonna have to provide an, at some point, an engineered plan for the driveway. I understand that, that's gonna basically, you know, that, that's gonna be acceptable to the building department or to the, whatever, you know, departments have to be satisfied.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair? Oh, go ahead.
Shouldn't we have that planned before we grant variance?
Well, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking, because looking at this plot plan here, that we're really looking at, between the shared driveway, the need for a grading variance, and it also looks like, based on this, I mean, there's, it looks as though it's almost on three sections of, different sections of property, looking at it this way. So, I mean, I, I'm, you know, I'm kind of thinking that it would probably be a good idea to actually see an actual plan for this, to kind of show us really the lay of the land, how exactly this is going to happen. I mean, because this looks like a very complicated thing. I mean, you're coming in from a dead-end street, okay, you're cutting across, using a shared driveway, then you're gonna cut across, and then you're gonna curve into a piece of property that looks like, based on this, you got a pretty good slope going into this property. So I don't, I don't really even know if this, this is going to be buildable. So we would kind of just be spinning our wheels here, kind of figuring this out and going through these motions for nothing. Phil, go ahead.
Brian, before you have a question, I, I think that what we need to do is, it's a deeded situation for the interior lot, that's already done. The, 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 the question is, I don't think that we are, should be addressing five of these variants, requested variances, only a couple apply. So if he cleans it up, changes it, re-applies, puts in a site plan, gets his, his site plan guy here, it should be, it should be a much easier situation. I know Brian Nesteriak had some, a comment.
Brian, go ahead, you got something?
I, I just, I just want to point out, they, they have submitted a site plan, so if there are some specific changes that the, the commission wants to see, it would just be helpful to say exactly what it is that you're looking for, because from what I'm seeing, it's a very detailed driveway plan that shows you everything that, that you need to know for what the variances that are applied for. And it definitely would be helpful if Jesse was here, but that's certainly not a requirement. But if you do want some revisions, I would just suggest you, you just clearly say what, what it is you want, right?
Yeah, I mean, it really, it really doesn't make sense to go through the expense of engineering a driveway for a property that I, unless I know that, I can utilize the access to do that. So, I mean, I, I, I think that granting the variance is, you know, I think that that's step number one. If I couldn't, and if I can't engineer a driveway to get into my property, then I don't have a buildable lot. But I'm, but everything that I've been told, and I've been in touch, talked to my engineer, Jesse Judson, he's telling me that we can do it, you know, but to actually, to go through all that and the cost of engineering that and designing that without knowing that you have, that you can use it, it just doesn't make any sense, doesn't make any sense to me. And as far as the variances that I need, I need a variance to be able to use a right-of-way when I don't own the fee. I'm asking for a variance to go to a seven, up to a 17% grade, and that's, I believe, oh, and if, and if I do need permission to be on a common driveway, I'm asking for a variance for that. That's it. So I, I mean, I think, I think that the, I think that the request is sufficient to, to vote on a variance, I do. And as far, again, as far as engineering, engineering it, I mean, there's gonna be drainage and all kinds of things that are gonna have to be, that are gonna be done with this. It's all, and it's gonna be designed in accordance with the lay of the land, in accordance with, you know, good, sound engineering practices, and I, that's what I'm gonna come up with. I mean, but I, I think that, I think that, I, 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 I don't think it, I don't think it's fair to ask me to engineer a plan if when I, if, if, if I don't have the right to put a driveway through there. That's what I wanna, I just want to establish, that's the purpose for the request.
Okay. All right, um, also looking at this site plan here, I just want to make I got all my bases covered, because my map kind of cuts off a little bit. So when we're looking at this map, we've got the Beshear property, okay, which is that triangular section, okay? And then next to that, looks like here, it says you have John and Anna Fanato's property. Does her property border any other existing properties, other share of property?
My, my properties, I don't know if I'm...
Chairman?
Yeah.
Can I answer, Jeff?
Yeah, hold on, let's just finish going through the questioning, because I, I'm curious just to see where the other side of this property borders.
Okay, so, so my property is, is like the middle slice of a pie. John Fanato is on either side of me, and then on, on the North Street side, there are a number of, a number of properties, but that's a big hill that goes, that goes very steeply down. So the property, if you had a, if you had a, like an assessor's map or a map to, to see the lay of the land, it's, it's, it's just a, it's a, it's a, it's a interior landlocked parcel. It's incredibly landlocked.
Okay. All right, so it is completely, completely then surrounded by other properties. All right, um, I'm gonna move, we're gonna move on down the line here. Jeff, what do you got?
Well, Mike, Mike had something to say, which I hope would help.
Something that you want to chime in with now, or do you want to wait until we're done with questioning and we hear from the public? Because usually we get to, we usually get to staff after.
Either or, I mean, I don't know if you wanted to talk now or not. I mean, I understand the need for all of these variances. Reading this, I, I get why you need a variance for each of these things. I don't think we need to have you come back. And first of all, my one question was, where the 17% in the driveway, where that grading was, is it in the existing
I, I think that what happened, as I understand it, is that, you know, there's cuts and fills, and when you're, and at the end of the day, in order to get, you know, to get down to my property, to, to where the house would be, it's gonna end up with a driveway that's gonna be up to 17% grade. I can't, I'm not an engineer, you know, but, and I don't, I, it just, I don't know what to say. I mean, you just, can just see that it's, unfortunately, it's, it's, it's a steep slope.
It is a steep slope. Yeah, I was, I was just, that might, my, that'd be my one thing, is wondering if there would be a way to get to the 10%, but I know...
I would do, I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm gonna do my best to, to keep, to keep the grid down. I think that, I think that just the, the land is gonna kind of determine it.
Yep, yep. But I, looking at the maps, I, I understand the need for all the variances. You, and even if you, if there wasn't the right-of-way issue, you would, and you had ownership of that section, you wouldn't have any frontage, or you would still need a bunch of these variances. So that's where I'm coming from. I understand that part of it. So the 17% was sort of my big question regarding that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, Jesse told me 17, that I should request up to, up to the 17% grade, because again, it's gonna be more than the 10. And I just, I just hope that, you know, it's just like, you can grant me the variance, but if I, if, if, when they do do the engineering on this thing, and they say, you know what, Mr. Brian Bunner, you need 18.5% grid, I'll be coming back. But, you know, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that, that we can do it, you know, within the, you know, within that 17% range.
Yeah, okay. That, that's all I have for now, unless someone says something that sparks something in me.
Okay, thank you. Paula, you're up.
Um, I just, I agree with everything that Jeff said. In reading the request for all the variances, I understand it looks like you put the, everything in, if I look at section 6.0 where it talks about the dimensional requirements with minimum lot frontage, you're explaining that the parcel has none, 17% allowed for road front lots as opposed to an interior lot. I, I got it. On all the, the variance requests, right? My question is, and this sort of piggybacks, I guess, with Jeff's is if I was at the end of the circle where Jupiter Drive is, okay, so I, I'm standing and I'm looking up at the driveway, right, that you would share access with, right? So if you're going up that little short part of the driveway, is that steep or is it relatively flat?
It's relatively flat. It's, it's actually, it's actually, I would, I would classify it as, if it's a grade, it's very, very minor grade.
Minimal grade, okay?
Minimal grade.
Now, you, you get past the shared part and you bear to the right over where the proposed driveway is going to go in. And then I'm making, then, then it keeps going up along this big long straightaway?
Yes.
Okay, so it goes up along the straightaway, right? And then around the curve and to the house, it's still going up?
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
It's so, it's so good. So if you, um, I mean, when, if you look there, if you, if you, it's kind of like at the top where you're making your, your turn to go towards the lot, it's going to be, if you're, I, I believe that that's going to be fairly level, but then you're going to basically start working your way down the hill. You know, and it may be some ups and some downs. There's going to have to be cutting and filling and stuff, but that, you're going to basically be working your way down from that point.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Hi. You said you had something. Do you want to? I mean, what, Mike, you got any questions or comments or anything?
Richard, you're on Tamina?
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe that before I have a letter here that was submitted by Mr. Fanato, who's an adjoining property owner. I believe that Mr. Fanato is on audio only at the 305 6231 number. And, um, maybe you want to defer to him or I can read his letter, um, into, um, the minutes of the meeting for you, but I'll leave it at his discretion if you'd like to see if you can get an audio with him at this point.
All right. All right. Then let's, let's move on to the, uh, public comment portion of this hearing. Um, and if Mr. Fanato is on, I would like to hear from Mr. Fanato next.
Uh, good evening. Could you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, yes. I wrote a, a very detailed letter, uh, and I'd like everyone to review that before you're acting on this. My biggest concern, why we own property on both the north and south side of this. Uh, and I think it, it needs to be addressed, uh, the hardship. There is no hardship here. There is no statutory hardship. The problem is this, and, and you need to know the history of this property. Property was previously owned by George and Wanda Basura. When they owned it originally, they had access both on North Street and on Jupiter. The lot on Jupiter Drive was cut out deliberately by the Basures. 58 Jupiter Drive, which where the, the easement is, was a deliberate cutout. They had full access. So that in effect landlocked this property. Now, at the time when they did that, I talked to them as a neighbor saying, you're blocking your access. So there is, they blocked it and created a landlocked piece. This piece was not originally landlocked. There is no statutory hardship. Now that hard, uh, landlocking or, or a problem like this uh, is grandfathered. It, it, it runs with the property. There is no, nothing statutory here that allows you to grant any variances because it was done deliberately. It was self-imposed. And that self-imposed is is, is, is the same as if you were, uh, as, as we, we like to say, oh, those are, are, are grandfathered in, existing non-conformance. You also get grandfathered in all the other things, not just the good things, you get the bad things. So this is a self-imposed problem. So there is no hardship. There is no zoning hardship here. And I think that needs, all these variances that are being requested would be unnecessary if that lot at 78 Jupiter was not cut out by the previous owner. And this is why this piece was landlocked. This is not an ancient piece of property in Seymour with, that, that we've all known pieces that have gotten landlocked for some reason. This is done in recent times. And the current owner bought it knowing this, with their attorney. So this is not, there is no statutory hardship. Now, the, the list of variances are, uh, the, the easement that was granted, the easement was granted is not ownership. An interior lot requires ownership of, of that, uh, of the accessway. This is not there, and I think, uh, Mr. Ryan Binder has explained that to you. The, all of the interior lot regulations have been here for years. Uh, now this piece, that easement was done to get access. Not every piece of property is entitled to become a building, a, a building lot. The access was used for cutting timber, for recreation, for numerous things, but it not necessarily a building lot. So I think right now, the problem that's, that's so blatant here, and it's, uh, I saw the, the hardships that a property cannot be otherwise used. It can be otherwise used. That was the intent previously was other uses. Uh, it's not necessary. You don't get a building lot necessarily. There is other solutions to this problem that haven't been explored, but to grant, uh, uh, five variances with no statutory hardship, I think i- is, is a real problem. And what I would suggest, um, is this isn't a cleanup uh, at all. This isn't cleaning up a problem. Uh, this is not, you're not there to solve problems uh, for every property owner. This is, this is much more than a cleanup. I think what you should do on this, to review the hard, the actual hardship, uh, is to turn this over to get a town council, uh, opinion and to leave the public hearing open. That would leave, get you a lot more answers, uh, than what you currently have. And it would clear up, uh, whether there is a true hardship. I don't think there is. I've had, uh, my attorney is Dominic Comiskey, couldn't be on the Zoom tonight. But, uh, there, we've seen no hardship whatsoever other than self-created. And, um, uh, under the statutes, and I think you've all been there long enough to know that, that self-created hardships are not, uh, are, are not actionable. You can't, you have to solve those another way. And I think, uh, that's what you need to look at. I think you need to get the, uh, the attorney involved and to really review this. But splitting off parcels and then selling it, everyone would claim hardship. You can't split and, and then say, oh, look what I did. I, um, the, the, the solution, the, uh, for example, I, I'll give you a couple of quick examples. Lot was not split out, you would have no variances whatsoever. If the lot was split out correctly, uh, uh, it was, with, you could easily, the grading problem, you have a whole lot to do grading, the 17% wouldn't even come into question. 17% is extremely steep, especially for an interior lot. And that's what was in the zoning regs for years because of the length uh, of driveway going to an interior lot, the grading was looked at as 10%. That's been there for, for years and years. Uh, the, all the things on interior locks were there for a reason. Uh, to have a long driveway with that is not, is not a good idea. But I think, you know, this goes back to, and I'd like all of you to review my correspondence, which, uh, I know by keeping the public hearing open and getting, uh, an opinion from town council, I think on the hardship would answer a lot of questions. I'm going to join around both sides that I intend to fully comply with any zoning requirements uh, on my property. And I, I think this, uh, to have a, an adjoiner with a slew of variances with no hardship presents a problem, a real problem. So I would like it to go to council and we can maybe address some of these in, in at next month's meeting.
Mr. Marganski, when did this, uh, letter come through?
That it came through this, it came through today, March 4th.
It came through today. Okay. So that's the reason why we don't have that. Now, do we have any evidence? Okay. Do we have any, um, like, previous evidence of the changes that were made to this property that Mr. Fanato brought up?
We have not been able to, Mr. Chairman, we have not been able to review this matter. Um, this came in, it was actually, um, late yesterday. Um, and that still would have been too late to get that out to, um, the commission members.
Okay. So, so there's, there's, there's a lot more things that I think that we really need to look at in this. Um, so with that said, I want to continue with the public and, and, uh,
Well, I'd like to, I would like to respond. I would like to, I would like to respond to what I just heard, if, 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 if I would be permitted to.
Um, all right. Well, you could respond through the chair, not through, not to Mr. Fanato directly.
Uh, that, that's fine. I just want to make a, a few points. Uh, one thing that Mr. Fanato said that this property had two, another access off of North Street, false. The, uh, that there are no, uh, as far as other uses for the property, no other uses for the property. As far as other solutions for access, no other solutions for access. And as far as no hardship, the zoning regulations clearly create a hardship here. There's clearly a hardship. There's an 18-point, there's an 18-acre interior parcel that cannot be used, been sitting that way for 30 odd years. And the hardship is that it can't be used unless, unless I'm permitted to utilize this right of way with the necessary variances. So that's just, uh, just want to make that statement for the record.
Right. Um, thank you. I think what comes down to now
I mean, I'm, I'm, I, I, it, it, it's a little bit shocking to me to hear what I heard, but no problem. I understand where it's coming from.
The, the question I think at hand here now is that is the hardship, is the, is this a man-made hardship? Uh, because if that is the case, um, then I don't believe that there is a true existing hardship based on the existence of the property. But I, I definitely, and I'm going to recommend, once we're done with the public portion of this, because I now absolutely need to see more evidence and even consider this, uh, because we do have to take into account the, uh, the, the questions, the feelings and the comments of the adjoining property owners. Uh, so with that said, I'd like to continue with the public portion of this. Is there anybody else from the public uh, that is wishing to speak on this matter?
Uh, hi. Um, I'm Rod, Rodney Searls. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi. Uh, so I live, um, on 54 Jupiter Drive. Um, so George Basure is, um, my neighbor. Um, so I, I just, I tuned in just to, um, I was hoping to see a picture or a map to see exactly where the driveway was going. Um, and how it would, um, you know, i- impact my privacy of, of my home.
Um, Mike, do we have the technology to put, do a screen share on this? Do you have a digital imprint of this?
I'm going to try to do it this way, because I don't have that.
Try to do it this way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that working for you?
Yeah, you gotta put it a bit lower, Mike.
All right.
There you go. So if you pin Mike's screen, you should be able to see it a little bigger. You said you're at 54, right?
54, yes.
So it looks like the driveway will run right along your property line.
Right. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a little computer illiterate, so here, but, uh, I'm not seeing a map or anything yet.
Uh, you guys, if you look underneath.
No, okay, I'm seeing, yeah. Um, okay, so I'm 54 right here. Here we are. Right. Um, yeah. Yeah. Oh, okay. It's just, it's just hard to, it's hard to see exactly, you know, there. Um, could you tell me how many feet away from my property line, the driveway would be?
Uh, let's see. It looks like approximately 70. I don't know. It's hard to tell because
Approximately, approximately like about five feet.
Yeah. I was going to say seven, seven-ish, yeah.
And that's, and that would be when it leaves George's, that would be when it leaves the shared driveway and starts to head down toward
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ryan Binder's property.
Correct.
So at that point, it's about
Straightaway.
Yeah.
Can I just comment? It looks like in that, um, five to seven foot, they're having a proposed retaining wall or rock cut at a height of EBA.
Yes.
Five feet?
Six feet.
Okay, six feet plus or minus, and the length would be 65 feet.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I, uh, interject really quick?
Yes.
So, so right now, there's an application of, in front of us, ZBA, for one, two, three, four, five separate variances. The description of what the gentleman likes to do is utilize a deeded right of way. So we need to discuss and have other people help us discuss the regulations for interior lots and what the deeded right of way says. So does he have a right to have a driveway access? So if he does, and there's, there's different regulations and rules for interior lots, we need explanation on what those rules are, what the deeded right means, and then for him to utilize the interior lot for a residential home or whatever his usage is planned to be, he needs these variances to, to expand that deeded right of way. So I, I think we're just spinning our wheels here. I think what we should do is move forward, post, um, keep the public hearing open, get the answers to these questions about the deeded right and the, the exceptions of the rules for interior lots. We're just going to go on and on, and we're not going to do anybody any good in either side of this situation if we try to make a decision right now without that further information.
I, I agree with you, Phil. Uh, but before we do that, we have to continue the public hearing and allow the public their complete right to speak.
Yeah, of course. You can continue the public hearing for as long as you want, but you can continue the public hearing for another month. Keep it open. You don't have to close it. So everybody that wants to speak would have the right to speak again next month. And we would have the additional information, and it might answer a lot of questions and give us direction and some light on the situation. So if, if everybody's going to be asking the same questions, we're just going to be going round and round and round because we don't have enough information to proceed.
I agree with you, Phil. Now, I'd like to talk to the rest of the public that's on this call. Paula, go ahead. What do you got?
I don't know, Phil, if it's time for a motion, but I'd like, once the public, if, if there's no other discussion from
Well, there won't be any motions because we're not in a meeting.
Okay.
This is the public hearing. So it's either I say we keep it open or we decide to close it. Uh, because it's just a public hearing.
Okay.
So moving on with the public, um, Mr. Seals, is there anything else that you would like to state?
Um, I, no, not at this time. I guess I would just wonder if I could get a copy of the, um, plans, just to see them at some point.
Available at town hall.
Okay. On file. Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this matter? on this matter? Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this matter going twice?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, John Fernando again. I just, uh, wanna, um, I, I, before you, you know, close this, I'm just asking that, uh, I, here you see that you had some requests to keep it open for some technical information. I'd like to emphasize that the town council involved in the hardship information should also be addressed in, in that, in, uh, in that, because I think that's, uh, really the, uh, the, the crux of the matter is, is the hardship. So I'd like to see that go to town coun, council. Well, thank you.
Okay, your comments are noted. Is there any other public comment going three times? Anybody else from the public? Okay, so on this matter, we will hear for today, um, no more public comment. However, I would like to recommend that we keep this public hearing open uh, until next month, so we can gather more information. Uh, we could discuss with, with town council, uh, in regards to some specific regulations pertaining to this case. Um, and so I can get a little bit more information in regards to, um, the supposed man-made hardship uh, on the splitting of the properties in this recent era. Uh, so we're gonna leave this public, uh, this public hearing opened until next month, and we are going to move on to our next case. Is everybody in agreeance with that? Paula?
Yes, I, I also want to hear more about how that works with this.
Well, I. We're tabling this?
Well, there is no table because it's not a meeting.
Okay, all right.
Being the hearing open.
All right.
So the hearing is going to be extended until next month.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, oh.
I'm just. I'm just curious as if, at this point, can we ask, uh, in, um, at this point, can we ask for specific, um, specific things? Can we ask specific questions of town council to bring back to the public hearing? Can we ask specific questions from the applicant to bring back to the next, uh, public hearing? Can we ask specific questions of the, um, the surveyor or whoever did the site plan work? Um, Mr. Judson, I believe, and ask that he be present? Can we ask, can we put that on record and ask those questions?
Phil, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, we, we could do all that, but we will do that during the discussion in our regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So, everybody's in agreeance that we're gonna leave this open to gather more information till next month? All right, so moving on to case number two, which is one thirty-two Silver Mine Road. Uh, this is just a, uh, re-application. Uh. So. Mr. Griffin, you're here, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, so you're come for us to, uh, send this application. Have you had any problems or anything?
Let me just turn my volume up here. I know that I'm aware of, we have not had any issues, uh, with neighbors. We've had no issues with, uh, compliance with the town, any of the regulations.
Oh.
Um, as far as I'm aware, we've been one hundred percent compliant and have had no issues.
Okay, um, Mike, have you gotten any, uh, anything regards one thirty-two Silver Mine and their permit?
The site's reviewed annually. We've had no issues with the, um, with the, uh, site and the, uh, workload that's there. Everything's consistent with the regulations. Staff recommends that the renewal, um, be accepted.
Okay, let's go down. All right, Bob, what do you got?
I got nothing. Seems pretty straightforward.
Phil?
I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good too. Uh, Paula?
I'm good.
Oh, Jeff?
All set, all set.
Okay, um, is there anybody from the public that wish, uh, one thirty-two Silver Mine Road and the renewal of the special permit? Anybody from the public going twice? Anybody from the public going three times? Hearing no public comment. I wish to move to close the public hearing in regards to Silver Mine Road's permit. We will discuss for a regular meeting to follow. All right, next on the agenda is Sterling Industrial Properties in the appeal of February eleventh, twenty twenty-one enforcement action from the Seymour Planning and Zoning Commission against the property located at nineteen Beach Streets. Okay. So, who would like to tell me?
I think. Mr. Chairman? Yeah. I, I, I was under the impression after the first two applications, public hearing, public hearing, that we would go into a regular meeting. Under regular meeting, we would just do a regular meeting and then do the, uh, um, you know, the senior alternates, public comment, blah, 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 and then go into the minutes of the last meeting, and then part of our regular meeting would be the applicant for, uh, that you just mentioned.
Mike?
That's correct. Am I right or wrong on this? No, you would be correct on that. That's, this is just an appeal of the enforcement action.
Uh, so we're not here for the public.
Your public hearing meeting was for one thirty-two Silver Mine Road and twenty-five B North Street?
Uh-huh.
Yes, I understand that. I understand. We had a public hearing at seven o'clock, a public hearing at seven fifteen. We go into our regular minute schedule, a regular meeting scheduled at seven thirty, and then we have the agenda of the regular meeting, and then Beach Street is item nine on the agenda of our regular meeting.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
Chairman?
Yeah.
Excuse me, just before you go into your regular meeting, and if Mr. Marini, um, could just clarify this issue for me, um, if the public hearing for twenty-five B North Street remains open, then there should be no discussion under twenty-five B North Street in the regular meeting. Would that be correct? No, it's not correct.
No.
John?
There's then, is there a desire to, to start talking about that issue within the scope of the regular meeting?
I think that they were looking to, clarifications of council, staff.
I, I would say directing staff to report back is fine. I think discussing the substance is not okay.
Okay.
Right, so I think there's a difference between instructing staff to follow back up and between, and, and between that and discussing the substance of the actual issue.
Yeah, we will not be discussing the substance. We will be discussing what we would like to know, uh, specific questions for.
That would be acceptable if, if staff is assigned, but be very careful, just don't let that lead into a discussion of an issue that could be interpreted as something else.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on then to a regular meeting. Does anybody need to take a few minutes? Everybody's good?
You've already taken a lot of my minutes. Let's move it along, big guy.
All right. Well, you think you could do this better, Phil, than be my guest?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
The clock, I'd like to call our regular meeting to order. Uh, everybody stand for the pledge of belief for our regular meeting. Get a flag, the United States of America. And to the public for which stands. Thank you. All right. To the all, it's, uh, we do not need to eat alternates tonight. Gonna go down the line and introduce all our regular members. Uh, to my left, on the far left is Bob Narone. He's a regular member. Uh, the next to him is Phil. Um, next to Phil is, is myself, Chairman Richard Demko. To my right is Jeff Hanowitz, Vice Chairman, and then to the right of Jeff Hanowitz is Paula Chapla. Uh, she's our Board Secretary. Okay. So public comment, uh, now, public comment is basically anything that we have not already discussed tonight. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on a previous ruling? Have any questions or comments for this board in general? Public comment going twice, public comment going three times?
Can I just, uh, interject? Uh, 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 do you need me anymore tonight?
Oh, no. You could be dismissed. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate it. Yeah, I just wasn't sure if you needed, if your information that you needed, you'll just get back to me with that.
I would not dismiss, I would not go if I were you.
We, we would. Excuse me, we will have specific questions, uh, that will be relayed to you from, uh, the Town Hall if we have anything for you.
Okay, so then, uh, I'm not sure, so is it, is it okay if I sign off, or do you think I should, Phil, did you think I should stick around?
I think you, I think you should stay.
Okay, no problem.
To find out what we're gonna be asking information about, but you won't be able to respond to us or answer any of our questions. Um, okay, uh, any other public comment? Hearing none, moving on to item number five, approval of the public hearing meeting minutes from January seventh, twenty twenty-one. In your package, you should have gotten all of that. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Motion by Paula. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Second by Phil, is there any?
Wait, who seconded?
Phil?
Okay, thank you.
Is there any discussion?
For, this is for the January seventh public hearing, right?
Right.
Okay, my, my last name is spelt wrong a couple times.
Again, okay.
That, that's the only thing.
Can our, uh, the, our Board Secretary please correct the spelling of Mr. Hanowitz's last name? This is probably the sixth time. This is, uh, come.
Staff apologizes, we'll, staff apologizes. We'll correct that for you.
It's okay.
Thank you. Okay, so other than amending Jeff Hanowitz's last name spelling, is there, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Item number six on the agenda, approval of the regular meeting minutes of January seventh, twenty twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Paula.
Second.
Second by Bob Narone. Is there any discussion? Jeff?
That, that one was good.
That one was good.
Yeah.
Cool. All right, no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Anybody want to abstain? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, item number seven on the agenda, twenty-five B North Street application for a variance. Um, so I'd like to propose to table this until next month with the caveat of getting more information. I'll entertain a motion to table this.
So moved.
Motion by Paula.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Okay, discussion. I have some specific things that I would like to inquire about. Um, so first, I would like an opinion from town council.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. You made a motion, and you had a second. The discussion can only be about the motion. So what we should have done, we should not vote on this motion yet. We should say, like town council said, be very careful on approaching the situation of North Street, item seven of the agenda, and just say we want some more information and leave it at that. There's no discussion. The discussion in this format of ZBA is only on the motion, the discussion is only on the motion itself.
Okay.
We should back up.
Okay.
So Paula, you withdraw your motion?
Okay, I'm gonna withdraw the motion to table till April.
Okay, but withdraw your second?
Yep.
Okay, motions are withdrawn, so we want more information.
Right, so, so you're requesting more information, that's what your board has asked of you, and we're now need to ask town council how we should do it under item seven of the agenda. So we're going to probably table, uh, item seven, I, that's what I, I gather, but we want some specific information that was discussed in the public hearing. We can't go back and forth and discuss anything about the motion, about the application, but we can discuss what we request for further information. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Chair through the town council.
I believe, yeah, we could do it either way. Um, yeah, because either way, if we table, table it under the caveat of wanting specific information.
Okay.
Um, so I don't care which way we do it, we'll do it this way. So some specific information that I would like in regards to acting on this case is an opinion from the town council um, in regards to the specific regulations and how they apply in this particular case for interior lots.
Perfect.
Okay, you're, so you're looking for an opponent, an opinion with respect to the specific zoning regulations, right?
And how it pertains to this interior lot.
Got it.
Okay, um, the second thing is I would like a little bit more specifics on the grade of the driveway. And I guess we can obtain that from Horrible and Judson. And then I would also like to see some information in regards to Mr. Fernando's claim uh, about how, uh, this was a, uh, what he termed a man-made hardship. Uh, so I just want to see when the parcels were split and divided, how and when, and by what manner. And I believe that we'll be able to get that information from Mr. Mark Ganski if we look through some of the, uh, property histories. Am I correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you. So those are the three things that I would like to see. Uh, go down the line like we normally do. Bob, what would you like to know?
Um, we're not discussing the information, so I guess.
No, we're just requesting specific things that we want to know, staff to inform us about.
Should we put a request then for Mr. Judson, the land surveyor, to be present? Is that something that we could request?
That sounds. So we could put that in.
I think if that's possible, that will be helpful for, for next month.
Okay, so we request Mr. Judson's presence. Bob, anything else?
Um, no, that's it.
Phil?
Uh, just, I'd like information, um, regarding the regulate, the legal, um, deeded right of way and its applications to this, uh, um, piece of property as the legal rights that he has as part of a deeded right of way.
Okay.
Okay, wait, wait, Phil, so you're looking for the legal deeded right of way and what can be allowed with that?
Correct.
Got it.
Phil, anything else?
I'm, I'm good, sir.
Okay, Jeff?
You, you guys have covered most of my questions.
We covered the bases.
I want, I want answered, yeah.
Okay, all right, Paula?
I'd like, um, better, uh, clarification with regards to the map with the, like, six foot by. the map with the, like, six-foot-by-65-foot rock wall. Like, I, I don't understand that, um, and I would like a bigger picture, a better picture, something that would give it more visibility.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. All right, so we have a list of specific questions. Mr. Marganski, we will send these over to you. Um, in, uh, you know, the request that we find the specific information out that we are looking for and have it ready and distributed in our packets for next month's public hearing continuance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, so with that, then I would like to make a motion or entertain a motion to table two, uh, 25B North Street, the application for a variance.
So moved.
Moved.
Okay.
Second.
By Paula, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anybody opposed? Everybody want to abstain? Chair votes aye, motion carries. This matter is tabled in this month. Item number eight on the agenda, 132 Silvermine Road, the renewal of special permit. Uh, in your packets, you have the information, um, in regards to the renewal of the special permit. And in the public hearing, uh, we heard, um, testimony in regards to not having any issues with this. So therefore, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the.
So, so moved, Mr., so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. By Phil, second by Paula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
You can undo the talk.
Anybody? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, item number nine on the agenda is now 19 Beach Street, the decision. Um, and my apologies, I didn't realize that this was not an actual public hearing. I, as this is an actual appeal of action. You're not actually at, or anything that requires the public's knowledge. So, does here that Sterling Industrial Properties is appealing a February 11th, 2021 action by the Seymour Planning and Zoning Commission against the property and business located at 19 Beach Street in Seymour, Connecticut? Um, so we've had this in our packet. I took a quick look over this and yeah, this with you, I, I'm a little confused as to what issue. So, uh, Mr. Marganski, if you could start and tell us exactly why you put some act, enforcement action, what enforcement action you put on, and just get everybody up to speed as to what the deal is with this. Because, um, the way that I'm seeing this is that if you just comply with the planning and zoning commissions, then we wouldn't be here. Um, but Mike, could you please give us a little bit of information in regards to what, what's going on?
So, uh, good evening. Um, and the, you had, does everybody have the packet there?
Yeah. Mike, can I just ask you one question before you start? I have you on, um, a letter to Mr. Viso and the date says February 17th, 2020. Is that 2020 or 2021?
2021, that was my error. If the remaining dates throughout that are correct.
Thank you.
All right, Mike, continue.
Um, um, so if you look at the back of your packet, and it's kinda going in inverse order at this point. In November of 2019, the owner of the property located at 19 Beach Street started site work without applying for an application, um, to, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our regulations, section two, clear, clearly state that applicants that are going to perform site work need to conform and apply for an application. Um, this application would have required, um, a site plan review for sections to, uh, for, um, site plan review and for soil erosion control, um, regulations. Um, off-street parking and loading, design standards, 14-2, other standards relating to parking, the number of spaces relating to parking, the calculations reporting, um, for calculus, uh, 14-4, 14-5. In addition to, um, we, it was a Jersey barrier wall that was installed that is adjacent to a residential property. There is no permitting in the wall. There's no engineering design to the wall. Um, it appears that the construction of the wall has, um, possibly interfered with the drainage from the state of Connecticut. Um, so these are all things that led to the initial cease and disorder that was issued in November of, um, 2019. The applicant at this point was working with, through staff, through myself and through our town engineer to try to clarify and resolve several of these issues. Unfortunately, every, as everybody's aware, the pandemic had occurred. Everything got really slowed down because of things that were going on with that. Um, August of last year, the, um, owner of the property, Sterling Industries, presented a site plan application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The application was initially started to be heard at the September 10th meeting of 2020. That application should have been completed and reviewed. The applicant did not attend any further meetings after having, um, communications between the town planner. You'll see that communication there, which is dated. I believe it keeps, uh, report was December 8th. There's a letter from, um, our town engineer for September 21st of last year requesting specific items for clarification for the site plan review. Based on the lack of information that came forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, at the, at the December meeting, they voted to um, deny the application and instructed staff to proceed with any, in, any and all enforcement action. After the legal notices were posted, the owner of the property indicated via communication to our town planner that there was, um, issues that had developed as to why he could not um, attend or end or fulfill the obligation of, of the site plan at that point in time. Um, that was bring, turned back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That information was committed back to them, um, last month, at which time, um, they voted to cease and desist all of his operations and any, um, work on the site. Um, and that's where we are, we are, we are at this point in time. So that's the overall summary. I can review the September 17th letter with you. I can review, um, Brian's here. He can talk anything in regards to his letter, um, with engineering requests. And then, uh, I do believe that our town planner is here also.
Okay, so, Mike, my specific question to you is that essentially you are enforcing a cease and desist on this property because they were non-compliant in providing the information that planning and zoning needed.
Planning and zoning, this is an enforcement action in accordance with the regulations. The Planning and Zoning Commission took the action of the enforcement to close down the business operation for lack of having a site plan and having the approvals on the walls.
Okay, so they did not furnish, the applicant did not furnish all of the information that planning and zoning was, was requesting?
That's correct.
Okay.
That, that's not correct. So, due to the, due to the time, due to the timeframes, due to the timeframes and the applicant's lack of response to addressing those concerns of the town planner and those of the town engineer, they had to, they had to act on that application, otherwise that would have presented a different problem.
And what problem would that have present?
Might have been able to have that by right at that point. If, if the, if the commission did not act on that site, he could have potentially had that, um, the site worked just by right. So he, they, they're obligated to, uh, uh, act on their applications during their timeframes, just as all, all of our commissions are.
Okay.
They, they were at the end of their timeframe.
Okay, let's, uh, let, let's hear from, uh, the applicant, uh, and see what he's gotta say. And then we'll go down the line and get some specific questions. So, please, uh, state your name for the record.
Biddy Viso, Dan, applicant, Daniel Ballack, applicant.
Okay.
So. We kinda ran out of time and it was kind of a problem that I had. I had a relative that had COVID down in Florida that I had to take care of. And then I came back and my 85-year-old mother had some issues. So, I had sent the comments from the town engineer to our engineer. But the problem is our engineer kinda doesn't act kinda unless we hold his hand. And he's got a ton of work. And we just ran out of time. What we're asking is just give us a little more time to clean up the project as far as, we haven't touched the property since we had issued our first cease and desist. Haven't touched it, haven't gone on it, haven't run anything, parked anything, nothing on it. Uh, we've abided by that. You know, I have six employees and, and we work out of that building. Um, you know, we're in the construction business and we do, uh, probably 80% of the maintenance on the buildings and the industrial park in Seymour. Um, you know, I, I, I will, I don't wanna be shut down completely and I gotta lay guys off. It just, it just doesn't make sense. If we could just have a little more time, we'll stay on top of our engineer. Uh, and I'm sure Mr. Nesteriak will agree that. His comments that he gave us are achievable by us, but we have to have our engineer, uh, make the prints and the designs for it.
Okay, so.
It's, it's a time thing. It's not anything where we. We, go ahead.
More time.
Right.
To provide the materials needed to be in compliance.
Correct, correct.
Then what exactly are we doing here? Okay, because the way that I see it is you need to be providing this information to planning and zoning. I mean, you might, uh, want.
Correct, but they've, they've already taken the action against us, so. I, I mean, at this point, I'm, I don't know what to do. I wanna stay in business. I, I can't just stop working and have no income while I'm trying to get Mr. D'Amico to re, uh, do our blueprints.
Okay, so then, at that point, then, you know, because time is obviously of an issue. How long do you pay to, to get the, to, to be able to do what you need to do to be in compliance for planning and zoning? I mean, do you think this is achievable in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days? I mean, how much time are we talking?
I, I would lean like the 60 days. Um, I sent all the comments from Mr. Nesteriak to Mr. D'Amico. And then he, he says he didn't receive them.
Okay.
So I hand-delivered them.
That's not really our problem at all.
I, I know that. And I, I, I just didn't have the time to stay on him due to the fact I had to take care of a few relatives.
Right.
But, and it's not your problem, and I do apologize for that. It, it is my fault. But I'm asking the board to be a little compassionate to my situation at this point. And just give us a 60-day extension of some types that I don't have to lay anybody off because I can't work out of my building. And, uh, have it redesigned so we can reapply back to the zoning board uh, for this permit. And hopefully, we, our engineer will get it right and satisfy the town engineer so we can move forward on it. That's all we're asking.
Right, so now.
I just need you to be a little more compassionate, that's all.
So you're.
I, I have a, I have a quick question if that's okay, Rich?
Sure.
Yeah. Why, why can't you guys work out of the building?
Well, the cease and desist says any action on the property.
Any action on the property that involves work that's not constructing anything?
From Marganski, I'm not sure, uh, that, that's the sign I have on, on the fence.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Says all operations. Says all operations.
He's all operations, okay. Uh, yeah, Phil, Phil, what do you got?
Okay, let, there's, this is a, this is a large packet. And this packet needs to be read, understood by this board, every word. Let me give you a synopsis of how I see it. This is not a situation where a general, where a business needs a few more days. I sympathetically understand COVID. 520,000 people in America understand COVID. I get it. The business started, this situation started in 2018, correct?
19, 19.
Okay, so 2019. Now we're sitting in 2021. If, this is not where the removal of the cease and desist is simply give me some more time. The time was given from 2019 to today. The business on this address made, uh, um, uh, they built a wall, they made improvements, they made things, they did cha, changes. And they were supposed to go to zoning to get permits. They go, they go, zoning puts it on the board, they do all their homework. The town of Seymour bends over backwards and helps this, this situation out. The enforcement officer gets involved and lays it out exactly what's gonna happen, what needs to be done. The applicant ignores, doesn't come to the meeting. Zoning has no choice but to deny the application. But let it be said, the work was already done. The work was already done. As a matter of fact, let me just explain something. If you go to this property and take a look, you will see a concrete block wall with Jersey barriers on top directly next to, um, um, property that is not commercial, it's residential. Right below the, uh, Jersey barrier, it's a damn swing set. Who, who, who is protecting those people? Regulations, zoning, enforcement, those are the people that are protecting that taxpayer. The situation is only that we, as a ZBA, is to, uh, address the request to lift the, um, cease and desist. The enforcement officer put a cease and desist on this property and in a very timely manner, the, the business applied for an appeal, which gave them a stay and allowed them to continue working. No remediation was done, no contact to zoning, no contact to, uh, anybody to, to, to straighten out their, um, non-compliance at all, nothing. And to be said that nothing is going on, on the property is an insult. It's an insult. They are still prop, still working on the property. The.
We have not, we have not touched that disturbed area.
I don't care what you got to say. I go by it every day.
If we didn't do.
Let me ask you, let me, here's another point. Let me, let me just make this, let me just make this point quite. Were you not the zoning chairman for Oxford for 20 years? Were you not?
No, only 14.
Only 14. So, so you are an expert on zoning regulations. So don't bullshit me in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, Phil.
The situ, wait, okay, I'm sorry.
I've never talked to anybody like that when I was. I've never talked to anybody like you just talked to me.
Well, I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize.
Your apology is not accepted.
I apologize.
Not accepted.
Okay. Well, the only point in front of this board is the zoning enforcement officer put on a cease and desist. He's gotta stay u- until he goes to the appeal. This is the appeal. Now, after this appeal, whether we lift it, in which would be a travesty if we lift this, this, a cease and desist, he cannot operate on that property till he complies. Now, this is not a situation where he needs to give. Now, this is not a situation where he needs to give zoning more information. He did the work. They did the, the work. It's not like they have a non-conforming situation. They created non-conforming situation, extremely terrible, non-conforming, uh, uh, considerations. Then they don't, they ignored the town, they ignored everything, they don't, they're not going to comply. And they want us to lift the cease and desist. So we lift the cease and desist, but where are we? After two years, you're telling me I lift the cease and desist and within sixty days, everything's going to be done? That's ridiculous. That's a ridiculous situation.
We're not looking to lift the cease and desist and everything's going to be done in sixty days. But at least we can have our engineer draw a drawing that complies to the town, go back to the town and apply again. And, and see if it meets all the criteria and then pull the right permit and finish the job. What happened is when we bought the building, the place was a mess. I don't know if you remember it before we bought.
Of course I do.
Okay. Well, you'll notice that it had so many trees over the top of the building, you couldn't see the building. But it, it was pretty much a ba, a pretty bad mess.
Mr. Chairman, Benny, I have a partner.
I, I have a partner that doesn't realize that there's zoning regulations. And sometimes he gets going on a machine and he goes at.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'll come back on a Monday and like, oh, whatever, you know? But we're trying to amend that and we're trying to comply. And I think Mr. Nesteriak will tell you that. His comments are achievable for that small parcel. We're talking a parcel that's sixty feet by about forty-five feet wide, not a big piece. That's, that's the disturbed area, not the rest of the building or the rest of the parking area or anything like that. We disturbed the parcel that faces on Route sixty-seven. And yes, a mistake was made. It was. But, you know, we're just asking, I mean, I have Mr. D'Amico working on it. And, and that's a little difficult for us to get Mr. D'Amico to handle everything that Mr. Nesteriak. And, and you're right. I mean, we probably did drop the ball a little bit, but.
Hold on for one second.
Yeah.
I already heard from Phil, okay? Now I gotta say something, alright? And I'm gonna speak uninterrupted for two minutes, okay? Doesn't everybody got that? Because I tried to make this point early before I was interrupted, okay? Here's the deal, okay? Your engineer who drafted this up, Mr. D'Amico, if he's dragging his feet, okay? What should you do? Okay? Because I know what I would do. If I hired somebody to do a job for me and they weren't doing it in a timely manner, I'd fire him and find somebody else to do the job in a timely manner. So that to me is number one, first and foremost, okay? Listen, I understand about COVID. I'm very sympathetic to your cause and everything, okay? But Phil is correct, this has been going on since two thousand nineteen, okay? So my thing is, is that if you have the work done already, it's simply just having your engineer convey the information properly to planning and zoning, then I don't understand why we are here listening to this case. Because as far as I'm concerned, this is something that could very easily be dealt with by getting a new engineer to submit the information to planning and zoning at next month's meeting. So moving down the line, we heard from Bob, we heard, Bob, did you speak already?
Can, can I respond to that first though?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, if you think finding a new engineer to take over an existing project that an engineer is working on is easy, I think you ought to maybe check into that because a lot of guys don't want to clean up another guy's mess. Uh, we didn't put in the drainage and stuff that Mr. Nesteriak wants. And we have to shift the wall and of course, correct those, uh, uh, concrete pieces on top that are, uh, not correct. That it requires a guardrail. We know this, you know, we, we just don't want to touch the project until everything is in place and get our permit and, and then correct everything. So there are mistakes made on those, on these walls, you know, and we realize that. Um, but to get another engineer, to clean up another engineer's, uh, plans is not easy. Uh, I've talked to a few already. Nobody really wants to go there, you know?
Well, listen, here, here's my point of view, okay? This is an issue between you and planning and zoning. And the way that I see it is that the cease and desist order was put on for a reason, okay? And if planning and zoning went along with ordering the cease and desist, then they obviously have a good reason as to why they have the cease and desist. So, I mean, do you think you could get this done in thirty to sixty days?
Yeah, I'll have to sit in front of the guy's office as he comes in in the morning and just hold his hand throughout the whole thing and address all the comments of the engineer.
If this was my business and this is what I was faced with, like what I said, I would be doing everything I possibly can to save my employees and to save my business. And if that meant doing whatever you had to do to find another engineer or to make contact with your current engineer, I would be doing that the moment I would have gotten the cease and desist order. But that's just me because that's just the way that I do business personally, you know, and especially if I have my employees' livelihoods on the line. But that's just me, okay? Let's continue down the line. Let's see what other information we can get. Jeff, what do you got?
So looking at it, there, uh, there's a lot of issues. I mean, obviously, like we said, this has been on since two thousand nineteen. It's a little ridiculous that it's gotten to this point. Understand COVID barring all of it, but I agree. I mean, another engineer should have been in. Even if you didn't fully replace Mr. D'Amico, you probably should have gotten someone else. Also, not a lot of confidence has been instilled that you'll be able to follow through when you said that you have a partner that when you leave them alone for the day, they have disregard for all zoning regulation.
Well, that was then.
He just didn't realize.
That was in twenty nineteen.
Okay, but, but do you understand sort of the issue there?
Yes, but we haven't.
Sort of a problem.
Since twenty nineteen. I haven't touched that top property since then. We haven't touched it.
And hearing from Phil that you were.
Well, I think he's.
In charge of the planning and zoning.
Not do any digging.
In charge of the planning and zoning commission in Oxford for how many years?
Not him, not me.
Okay, but, but, but you were, correct?
I was, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, so you should probably have people working for you that are doing major work?
He doesn't work up on things. He doesn't work for me. No, I don't work. He doesn't work for me.
He's your partner, right?
Yeah. On the building together.
Okay. So, so you should probably let him know not to do things, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, after he did the thing, it was in twenty nineteen, yeah.
Like, like, it's a little ridiculous that we've gotten to this point.
It is. We know that.
Reading through this, there's, there's a dangerous Jersey barrier, there's drainage that's been messed up. Like, I don't, I don't know how.
It wasn't touched. The drainage was not touched.
I don't know how we go about.
We had an onsite walk with Mr. Nesteriak. And I think he realizes, uh, what that, what he put in his letter and what was out there was two different things. Yeah, Mr. Nesteriak, are you still there?
Brian.
I will happily ask him in a minute, but I, it's, I, I, I don't, what you're bringing to us, I don't, you're not instilling confidence in me to grant you uh, approval. You know what I mean? That, nothing you've said so far today makes it seem like.
Look, if I could draw, if I could draw it myself, I would have, but I, you know, like I said, uh, we put a little faith in our engineer to take care of it and it hasn't been taken care of yet, so.
But that, that's, that's not even the issue. That's not the question here.
Phil.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Had your chance to speak, okay?
That being said, Brian.
In an organized fashion.
I, I'm sorry, Mr., I, I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Well, listen, Phil, I, I, I have to say this because I'll be honest with you, okay? Um, a- as the chairman of this board, I just want to say that I expect from every single member of this board, applicants with the utmost respect and dignity, okay? So I'm not really too happy at the moment with the way that you treated our applicant, but we'll discuss that a little later, okay? So let's continue on and let's try to come up amicable solution to this problem, okay? In an orderly fashion like we normally do, okay? Jeff, finished?
Uh, I just want to ask Brian, like they said, so what is it regarding the, the drainage that it discussed in a couple of these letters here? What's the concern there? Um.
Brian, sorry.
And all that kind of stuff.
Um, there were a variety of drainage comments in, in both letter. Um, the, the main thing is on a commercial development, whenever you, uh, increasing impervious area, you need to detain for, you need to have some stormwater calculations that go with it. Um, there was, uh, also, um, an ambiguous, uh, outlet pipe that was on there. Um, and after did this, well, which is, I think what Mr. Viso is referring to. Um, it was determined that, uh, the, the water was going the opposite direction that the pipe, that, that the plan sort of led me to believe. So, um, this, the, the subsequent letter removed that. Um, but there's still drainage issues that need to be taken care of. There's still, um, a lot of issues that need to be taken care of. Um, and it starts with a plant and it starts with a permit and it starts with an approval.
So, Mr. Nesteriak, I have a question for you.
Sure.
How long do you think it will take to complete this entire process to satisfy the requests of planning and zoning?
Well, I mean, that's a hard question to answer. Uh, the, once you get a sub, um, an application in, the, the commission has at least sixty-five days to make a decision. So, um, and it can continue on for another sixty-five days after that. So it could be two to, two to, so I, I can't tell you how long it will take. Um, but there's two options here. The, the, there's get a permit or restore it back to wh- what it was originally. Those are really the two options.
Okay. All right, Jeff.
So, so I'm dealing with those. Um, so I'm, I'm, that's all I have for now. I guess we need to, like you said, amicably figure out how to go about this. I, I want to help you guys. I don't want anyone to lose business. I don't want anything like that to occur. But like Phil made the point, we have a duty to uphold these regulations for the town and uphold this to other taxpayers. So sort of a rock and hard.
Can we, um, come with some progress in thirty days or something like that? Would that appease him?
Let's, let's continue our line of questioning because there's still a few people that need to speak. Paula?
Okay, so I'm looking at the certified mail from December eighteenth. Mr. Viso from Keith Rosenfeld. So there's a list of six items. Applicant has not, applicant has not, applicant has not, has not demonstrated, prohibited, prohibited. To me, and then when I look back, that this has been stuff that's been going on since, uh, November nineteen, November nineteen to twenty nineteen, I just, I don't, I'm, I'm truly sorry. I really don't understand what has not been clearly expressed. And I don't see any forward movement on any of these things since December. And it's almost ninety days past, December twenty twenty. Right? Because we're in March, if it, you know, serves, we're, we're like, uh, the fourth. So we're short. We're, we're two months and two weeks into it and all this stuff has yet to be addressed. Um, I just, I don't know how or what you're going to do to get this stuff done. And then I look at Mr. Marganski's letter and it's the same stuff, you know, February third. Where, I drove by the property, um, I saw the Jersey barricade stacked three high. And my heart was in my throat because it would not take a great deal for these things to go up and over. I'm just, you know, setting aside the issues with drainage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then when I hear that, you know, Mr. Uh, Viso, that you've been involved at Oxford and on the zoning board in Oxford, I I'm at a loss as to what to say other than the fact that I'm not seeing any forward movement, I'm not seeing anything being done in good faith. I mean, I, I looked at this property and it's like, you gotta be kidding me, right? I mean.
Allowed to move anything. We weren't allowed to touch anything. If the board would allow us to take the single line of Jersey barriers off, would gladly take them off. I told my partner, Dan, I told him, you're not allowed to go up there. You can't go up there. And you cannot have any activity up there till we get a permit. So we stopped, but we can remove those if that'll make you, uh, make things better.
You know, if I look at this and Mr. D'Amico has not done what he should do um, for planning and engineering and surveying consultants. And he hasn't, wait, wait, he hasn't done stuff. We have other venues throughout the state of Connecticut, setting aside, i- if you're talking for somebody to, you know, Mr. Viso, you talked about drawing the thing, the thing out, then draw it out. Go to University of New Haven, get somebody who's, who's working in this to put the plan together. Because then at least you could have something to present. But I mean, if, 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 you know, Fred D'Amico here is not doing his job and I'm looking at this, he's talking to Bill Peck back on July twenty-first, twenty twenty. You gotta be, I have inspected the concrete block containing walls in these, this is pathetic from my perspective. I did property management and all kinds of stuff in, in my former operations manager position. And this answers like absolutely nothing. So I'm just, I understand the cease and desist, but in, in, in good, I would have to see a, a plan laid out before I would feel positive about what's going to take place on this problem.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, Bob, did, did we skip you? I think we did.
Yeah, 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 you kind of passed over me. That's all right.
Sorry, Bob. That's what happens when people speak out of turn. Okay, what do you got, Bob?
Well, after hearing everything at this point, I'm not going to rehash or reiterate a lot of great points that were made. I've just wasted a lot of time here, but I think Paula was starting to get to the point that I'm going to make. Um, I think that there needs to be something laid out by an engineer presented, I think, with all of the past scenarios that have brought the applicant to this point, uh, unfortunately, I think they, they need to take the initiative with the length of time it might take, whatever's needed. But an engineer needs to present something legitimate to move forward on their half. Because there's just been too many things that have led, that led them to this point that I feel like they've pretty much got theirself in and it seems like this could have been prevented. So I think the applicant created a hardship, unfortunately, I, that they need to be involved and present something at this point. I think that.
I just.
That would be the way to go. Whatever needs, needs, needs to happen to, to make that happen, I think that would be the way to go.
I just.
Bobby, you.
Can I just make one more comment, please? I apologize. Can I just make one more comment, please? I apologize.
Yeah, go ahead, Paula.
And Phil, you had talked about this where, um, you had made comments about the package and all this other stuff. Cease and desist all operations. The only thing that I would say for the cease and desist all operations is that I don't know if I'm gonna say this right, but I think that people should have access to the property to be able to conduct the business. However, the area in question should not be touched at all until there's a plan, until there's everything else. You know, that, that's how, how I would look at it, right? So if somebody needed to go into the building, you got a piece of equipment, or you needed to move the crane stuff out on the right-hand side of the building or whatever, and, and as long as you weren't mucking around with the whole area that's in question, I wouldn't want to impact your ability to generate revenue, income, and keep six people employed, right? So
And that's what we're looking for. That's what we're looking for.
So I don't know if that helps. Mike, um, Marganski, I don't know if that is something that can be done, like cease and desist all operations pertinent to the crux of the matter. But, you know, like, you couldn't use a backhoe or anything to move anything in that area that you've been working on until you get all the work done.
That, that's what we're, we're hoping for.
So, Mike, let me ask you this, because we have to act on this night, okay? Right?
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, we have to act on this tonight because of certain legalities around the zoning laws, okay? So let me ask this, Mike. I'm gonna give you two different scenarios because I'm not quite sure whether or not this is our jurisdiction to impose these particular requests. But the first scenario would be to leave the cease and desist in place and reconvene in thirty days, and if there's been any progress, allow them to make the progress that they need to on the property to satisfy planning and zoning. And if we feel as though in thirty days that progress has been made, then lift this at that point. Is that something that we could do?
Um, first off, I just, the cease and desist pertains to the operations and to the site work. It in no way prohibited the owner from presenting another plan between the time that he signed this order and prior to this week to get another plan to go, a another site plan application to go before B and C to start the approval process again. So the applicant, the owner has lost another, you know, fifteen or ten days to even move this along this month. Um, I'm, I don't know what my computer's doing, but it's turning on and off, and I'm not sure why, but, um, certainly, um, this, this, this was not my order. This was the order of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This was for all the reasons that you've discussed to get compliance and get a site plan that works, that's been approved. And then, once that site plan has been approved, to get remediation to the areas that need to be remediated. Or if the applicant does not want to do that with a site plan, he would have to remediate the property to the pre-existing conditions to that prior to November of two thousand and nineteen.
So, could we then add, could, could we then request that the remediation be allowed to commence before making a final decision as to permanently lifting this order with a thirty-day stipulation? Or is this an all or nothing thing? Like, are we basically, like, do, do we have the authority to say, you got thirty days to do what you gotta do, show us some progress, and then we'll lift this?
What do you, what would you be lifting at that point? The cease, or do you, are you, do you?
Cease and desist based on any progress that they might have made over the course of the next thirty days.
Do you want to allow him to continue his work operations with the contingency that he get a site plan approved within a certain amount of timeframe that's going to require whatever?
No, and that's, and I'm saying keep the cease and desist in place for thirty days while he makes these improvements and then lift the cease and desist in thirty days if the improvements are satisfactory.
The improvements would have to be done by, that would need to be approved. So the only thing that he can do would be to start the process for April. And he will not, in that, those approvals won't start until after your next meeting. You're scheduled to meet April first.
Right.
Um, he won't get to planning and zoning with an application now until, I believe it's April eighth. The best thing that could have happened would have been for the owner to turn around and have an application in our site plan to move forward um, this particular month. That was indicated when he, you know, I had suggested that to him that he get a site plan and application moving forward again, so that at least he's showing intent that he wants to um, comply with regulations and then get his approval so that he can conduct um, his remediations to the way that he wants to develop his property.
Can I, can I interject for one second?
Can I interject for one second?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I did take all Mr. Nesteriak's comments with the existing print that was submitted to the town. And I marked up the print myself. I circled everything, gave it a number, and I had it on paper. I gave that to our engineer, but there we are with still nothing yet.
I, I have a question. Where is your engineer tonight?
I don't, I, I didn't think we needed him, so I didn't bother because
You didn't think you needed him for
He, he didn't do anything. He basically didn't do anything. There's not yeah, what's he gonna say? He's gonna take the, take the rap for not working the project? I, I mean, he hasn't just done anything on the project. I've done more on the project than he has.
Okay, here, here's my take, and here's the deal, because we've definitely spent quite a bit of time on this already. And as far as I'm concerned, this is stuff that probably could be dealt with through planning and zoning. Um, and, and the fact that your engineer is not adequately representing you, um, that's not our problem on this board, and as far uh, at this particular point, it is now eight fifty-nine. There is really not much that we can do in this case. This is not our issue. This is planning and zoning issue. They made the recommendation to shut you down for a good reason. Um, and as far as I'm concerned, if they have a good reason, and I know everybody on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they are just as compassionate as we are, if they made the recommendation to shut you down, then it was within good reason. And if they're looking for something specific from you, then just do what planning and zoning is asking you to do. But as far as I'm concerned, it is eight fifty-nine, and I would like, without objection, to entertain a motion to deny this application and kick this back to planning and zoning.
Motion.
Motion by Jeff? Second by who? All right, is there any discussion on the motion?
Just, like you said, it, it needs to get sent back to planning and zoning. You guys need to go back to them with a new plan.
Yeah, that's it in a nutshell, and that we can't be more accommodating.
That's okay. We understand.
Not our issue. You know, this is a zoning thing. You know, okay, they want a site plan, and they want new, new rules and stipulations that you guys need to follow, then so be it. That, that's their deal. That's not our deal to override them, so, uh, all those in favor?
Wait, Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question? Can I just make a comment, please?
Yes, Phil. The, the, our job as ZBA, we have a, a, an appeal for a cease and desist order. When the cease and desist order was placed on the property for the reasons that were on, on non-compliance, they timely said, we're gonna go into an appeal to ZBA, and they gotta stay. They're able to operate on that business and that property. So if this is the appeal, and we deny the appeal and, and keep these, uh, cease and desist in place starting tomorrow morning, no operation whatsoever can happen on that property. He cannot deal his business, and he cannot do anything on that property because he did not make the appeal. Mike, am I right or am I wrong on this?
That would be correct.
Thank you. With, the, the situation is not a correctable situation. Our discussion wasn't was, was, was null and void, actually. We're, our job is only to say our enforcement officer put a cease and desist because of zoning regulations. And he came to our board and appealed it. Now, we are saying we're not going to uphold the appeal. We're going to keep the cease, cease and desist, but tomorrow morning, nothing, and I mean, nothing could happen on that property. He cannot operate his business. That's our only tool to have this non-compliant situation that the business created be remediated. Am I correct, Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so there is an open motion and a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I, I, I need to abstain.
And Paula abstains. All right.
Can you get a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote. Jeff?
Oh, wait, 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 wait. No, I, I, I agree. I agree.
All right, so let's go down the line, just so everybody's clear. Bob?
Yes, I'm, I'm motion. I mean, I, I agree.
Aye.
Aye.
Paula is an aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Jeff is an aye. Chair votes aye. I'm sorry, we cannot help you out in this, but this is a matter that, between you, planning and zoning. We wish you the best. Thank you.
Okay.
So just for the record, the, uh, motion was to continue to uphold the cease and desist. Application is denied. Okay, item number ten on the agenda, staff reports. Mike?
Um, that's all I have at this point.
Okay, um, item number eleven, new business. Anybody got anything new? Mike, any?
No, I don't have any. No communications for the board.
Nothing coming down the pike for anything that we might need to know for next month?
Off the top of my head, no.
Okay, item twelve, correspondence. Did anybody get any hate mail or love letters?
No.
Nothing. All right, item thirteen, public comment. Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Public comment going twice. Public comment going three times. Close public comment. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Jeff?
Second.
Second by Paula. Is there any, uh, discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. I think we did the right things tonight. And we will see you all at next month's meeting and hearings if we, uh, well, yeah, we're gonna have that continuous, so. Uh, so we'll see you all next month.
See you next month.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you, Mike, Mike.